Meeting to order and do a roll call vote, or excuse me, a roll call. Members announce their presence and where you're at, or say your identity and where you're at tonight. Yeah.
Commissioner Bean?
Um, here, Vernon Township.
Commissioner Rogers?
Uh, here, I'm in Clare County in Grant Township.
Commissioner Vogel?
I am in Denver Township, Rosebush, Michigan.
Mr. Silker?
In Gilmore Township, Isabella County, Michigan.
Commissioner Horton?
I'm in Rodney, Michigan, Macosta County, Michigan.
And Commissioner Nyer?
Lincoln Township, Isabella County.
Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner O'Neil are absent.
Okay, thanks. All right, we need to do the pledge of allegiance. If you could put a flag up, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Hey, Jeremy, I'm gonna be working down here for a little bit.
Okay, just want to remind everybody that this meeting will be recorded, it's being livestreamed, and it will be, will be saved for perpetuity on, I'm assuming, the Isabella County website. So, we have a jet, an agenda in front of us, and are there any additions or changes, staff?
There are no additions or changes to tonight's agenda.
Okay, would entertain a motion in a second to accept the agenda as submitted.
Nyer, so moved.
Support Horton.
All right, we're gonna have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Horton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Commissioner Nyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Silker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Township Concerns Section, we're gonna roll that into the public comment piece, so this brings us to the public comment section of the meeting for items that are not on the agenda. Any public or?
Kelly, this would be the time that anybody from the public wanted to speak on behalf, about the site plan review, this would be their opportunity because it is not a public hearing.
Yep, you're right, sorry about that, so, so if there is any public that has comments about the site plan review, now is the time. If you, if you want to, uh, raise your star, I believe, Ray, whatever the protocol is.
Star nine to raise your hand. Do we have any, uh, public in the, uh, meeting, Ray?
We do not have any public in the meeting at this point in time, and I did have a message from Jackie Curtis, Denver Township, Rusty, just letting you know that, um, everything is still good in Denver Township.
Okay, good. All right, hearing no public comments, we'll close the public comments section. And there is no public hearings, we'll move on to other business, the non-public hearing of Site Plan Review twenty dash twenty.
Yeah, so, um, tonight we have one of us in a special meeting, uh, Site Plan Review, uh, number twenty dash twenty, uh, the applicant property owner is Eli Hirschberger. This is in, uh, Rollin Township, Section twenty-eight, property location, uh, address is ten two ninety-seven South Wyman Road. Uh, this may be familiar property to you, this is the property that was just, uh, conditionally rezoned or came in front of you in September for a conditional rezoning, um, going from Ag three to Ag two to operate a sawmill or a, uh, rural production and processing type facility. Um, in November, uh, the planning commissioner, and sorry, in September, the planning commission, uh, made the recommendation to the county board. Um, and then following that, uh, they held a hearing on November seventeenth, and the county board voted to, uh, approve the conditional, um, uh, rezoning and sign the conditional zoning agreement, uh, with the applicant. So this is the site plan application, uh, this was received, uh, requesting a special meeting on December ninth by Eli Hirschberger for the milling and processing of farm products or the sawmill activity. Uh, the application includes a detailed site plan showing the location of the sawmill and the storage areas. Um, once again, it's just important to note that the conditional, uh, rezoning and the availability of the conditional, um, activity, uh, was permitted under the conditional rezoning statement of conditions. Uh, Mr. Hirschberger's proposing to operate a sawmill, um, and, uh, in, in a currently constructed forty by forty-eight, uh, foot building with an enclosed, uh, sawdust storage area. They have laid out, uh, the log deck, um, and the, um, uh, uh, storage area, the outside storage area, log piles, those kinds of things, uh, they're not in the right of way, uh, they're sited, uh, adequately on the property. Staff did visit the site and the property and talked to the applicant and worked with the applicant and, um, um, determined that based on this, uh, topography, the current topography out there, it was, uh, the, uh, the topography doesn't require us to impose any additional, um, screening onto this, um, action or the site plan. The one area that, uh, the staff, uh, did look at is, we want you to, to maybe have some discussion about is the south end of the building, um, is forty feet wide and is wide open, this is the area in which they'll be loading, uh, um, the logs will be loaded into, so it's an open area, they need it open for the processing and rolling of the logs and moving the logs into the facility. However, you know, we have some potential concerns there that maybe, um, um, that might act as some sort of a, uh, 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 the, the sound will bounce around within the building and work its way out that south end, creating, you know, potentially more noise than just a activity operating. Um, so we, we, um, want to have some discussion about that, um, during your discussion tonight. Um, as well as part of the application, um, in September for the conditional rezone, uh, Mr. Hirschberger had some, uh, offered up some several site plan conditions, uh, to address concerns that were raised by, uh, neighbors. And among those were, uh, waste disposal, um, open burning of scrap and waste, noise and road impacts. Along with they had offered up, uh, operation during, uh, a limited daylight, uh, or be limited to daylight hours, you know, staff would maybe recommend that we, uh, you know, set some hours there, either a seven to seven or an eight to eight type of a thing, uh, like we do for, for many other uses. Um, staff has provided, uh, several, uh, recommended conditions in the summary section of your staff report, and I will get to those here in a moment. You do have Section eleven oh six standards for site plan review in your staff report. In summary, uh, upon review of the application, uh, staff has determined that appears to be complete and meets the, uh, appears to meet the, uh, requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uh, you've been provided with a copy of the site plan checklist for your review. And, um, if the planning commission is going to make an approval, um, on this request, staff recommend the following conditions be placed upon, um, the approval. One, there shall be no open burning of scrap and/or waste materials. Um, two, the size and location of a log deck, log pile, slab wood and finished product areas shown on the site plan shall not be increased without prior approval. These are the areas of open storage outside. Um, there should be no, um, there shall not be more than six incoming or outgoing truckloads per month. I think they indicated to us that there was four incoming and two outgoing per month. Um, we don't care if it's three and three or two and four or four and two, I think just limiting them to the six, um, as they indicated in their plan. Number four, the diesel engine room, uh, on the site plan should be completely enclosed and shall be soundproofed, um, and soundproofing shall be provided. Number five, the applicant shall provide a copy of the driveway permit or approval of the existing driveway for this specific use from the Isabella County Road Commission. Um, those are what were in your staff report, staff would indicate, um, also adding, um, to your, uh, to your motion or your action if approving, uh, a limitation on the, uh, hours of operation, whether it be seven to seven or an eight to eight, um, type of a thing. Um, other than that, uh, staff would be willing to, uh, take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I have a question. I don't see, again, this is probably just me, I don't see any type of, uh, septic or, and or, is, I can't remember from last time, is there a road, I mean, excuse me, is there a house involved here, or are they gonna use a septic, are they gonna build a, or how, or?
Yeah.
Do for?
We, I, I believe on the, um, previous, there is a home on the property, I do believe this is an operation of family activity and they'll be utilizing the home, but maybe Mr. Weiss could, uh, could answer that, uh, uh, question for us.
There is a house.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
And, uh, if you look at, uh, the house on the site plan, immediately to, uh, the southwest of that is a septic tank, um, drain field that was properly permitted and, uh, and installed, so that does exist.
Okay. Is there anything that, uh, Mr. Weiss or the Hirschburgers would like to add to what Tim had brought up today?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, as far as, as far as we can tell, everything, uh, complies, uh, with the ordinance, uh, this is our, our third trip and we're happy to be here, and thank you all very much for permitting this, uh, this special meeting, uh, can't tell you how much my clients appreciate that. Uh, the traffic, um, uh, Tim has, um, addressed on the six trucks, um, we think there are four in, two out, but, uh, six trucks a month. Uh, there's no real, uh, any other traffic, there's no retail operation here, uh, there's, there are, um, we're just not expecting anyone to come in and visit, uh, this operation, so there aren't any, uh, parking issues. The number of workers that are involved in this, I think we touched on this back in September, uh, in the Amish, um, businesses, they do not employ, uh, what we call English, or they call English. Uh, the workers here are going to be family members, actually Eli's brothers. The, uh, the existing properties that, uh, exist here, uh, and are referred to in the, in the, uh, site plan are, the closest one is eight hundred feet away. And, uh, uh, the next, uh, furthest is nine hundred and sixty feet away, the Preston's home, uh, the thousand feet away, and the topography essentially blocks, uh, view from, from any of those. We had, uh, conducted some sound studies, and we did refer to this back in September, you may recall, of, uh, this exact mill operating in Macosta County. By the time that you're four hundred feet away, remembering that the closest property here is eight hundred feet away, by the time you're four, four hundred feet away, the sound, um, uh, at a decibel level is down to forty. And, uh, there was a question in September as to what does forty decibels mean? Uh, I looked at the EPA standards today, that's the noise in a living room or a quiet office, that's how much dissipation of that sound, uh, exists. Uh, and that was on a straight line basis, here we've got topography, some woods that are blocking all that, so sound shouldn't be, uh, an, an issue. As to the proposed, uh, restrictions, the, um, uh, seven to seven is the hours that, uh, Mr. Hirschberger believes to be preferable. Between, uh, uh, seven and seven is fine, uh, keeping in mind that there's no real artificial light other than, uh, gas lanterns, uh, it really isn't possible during the winter to operate, uh, after sunset. The other restrictions, uh, no open burning, acceptable. The, uh, log deck, et cetera, not to be increased, acceptable. Uh, the six, uh, vehicles in and out total, acceptable. The, um, driveway permit, uh, we knew about that, uh, we're arranging for that, that is acceptable. Uh, the enclosure of the diesel shed is acceptable, so we, we don't have, uh, or my clients don't have, uh, any, uh, suggestions or wish to, to, uh, lighten up on, on those restrictions. Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Hirschberger is here to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Chair?
Regarding back to the sound, uh, issue, uh, i- if there is, uh, for any reason, uh, an acceptable level of noise, is there an easy resolution for that? As, as far as staff can see, there's about, in, trying to enclose that building or trying to set up some type of absorption material outside of the building? Or do you have, uh, does the staff have any suggestions or anything that we should at least discuss?
Yeah, well, what I, what I would say is, um, you know, we, Mr. Weaver, you know, refers to a study that was completed, you know, we don't know the methodology of that study, we don't know, you know, how that was operate, you know, how it was placed, and we don't know the details, um, in any way to go into any great lengths of, of, of discussion about what noise is at what levels. You know, the ordinance says that you're not gonna impact your neighbors with excessive, you know, noise. We, we don't, you know, it's not really defined what excessive noise is, what that noise level is, but we have always tried to, you know, maintain, uh, anytime we have some noise levels, um, tree planting, some things that are gonna help buffer that off, he does indicate that there is, you know, adequate topography out there, there is pretty good topography out there, but when you have a steel building, you know, that's enclosed on three sides, and basically that sound is gonna bounce around in there and it's gonna leave through one side, that, that was the only area that I, that I had some, you know, some concerns. I do believe back on one of the very first sawmills that we had, um, approved, we had made, took some actions to, to have them put in some of that, um, it's like, uh, uh, oh, what's it called? It's like a baffling, it's like, um, it's the, like, freezer type baffling, it's that plastic sheets that sort of hang down and they're slatted and you can kind of walk through them. They're intended to keep, um, they're intended to keep, you know, cool air into a cooler type of a thing, but I think we imposed some of them in some areas, um, that would allow that noise to kind of get buffered down and knocked down by that. And, and when I, when I seen the forty foot wide opening, I, I just didn't know if there was any room to put eight foot of that on both sides, you know, limit that, that interior area to, to twenty-four, twenty-six foot of operation, or not, they're not taking twenty-four foot wide logs in through there, I'm assuming they're taking eight, you know, eight, eight, ten, twelve footers through tops, um, so, so if there was room for something like that, that would adequately, you know, take care of it. To stay, you know, do nothing today, and if there is noise in the future, I don't know how we really regulate, you know, what level that noise is, if we set it to a decibel meter and a reading, you know, we've got to have, you know, reading material and, and, and parameters and methodology of studies and things like that, so, you know, if there was any way that we could do something to just kind of help it now, that would be the best solution, staff's opinion.
So.
I'd like to add to that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, um, my real life concern with that, um, and is that Amish tradition doesn't allow electric motors. And I think many, uh, sawmills in an English community would rely on electric motors, here, here we've got a diesel engine that moves on an arm, uh, on this bandsaw. And that thing puts out fumes, uh, it is, it is, uh, piped to the outside, but I would hate to, from a safety point of view, um, rely on that a hundred percent. So since we don't have electric available to us and have to rely on this, uh, small diesel engine, uh, my concern is that if we screen that, uh, we're gonna have, uh, fume issues. Uh, I, I, I will readily accept, um,
Chairman, I don't know if it's just, I'm not catching any of it.
It's, um, I, I can hear it all right, so, is it Tim that, is that you that couldn't hear it, Tim? I think you froze right now.
Yeah. Isn't the diesel engine enclosed in a room on the outside of the building?
There, there are actually two diesel engines, uh, the larger diesel engine is enclosed, thank you for noticing that. That drives a belt, uh, Amish are masters at belt drive, uh, machinery. Uh, the belts are, are, uh, in cutouts below the floor, it's, it's really quite scientific. Um, what, what I'm talking about here is on this portable bandsaw, uh, where you roll the log onto it, that that bandsaw is that moves back and forth is driven by a diesel engine, a smaller diesel engine.
Okay.
Tim, are you, were you hearing that, or are you still off?
Yeah, I heard the end of it, I was, yeah, I was, it was really choppy at the beginning, but I did hear the end of it, am I coming through good to you guys?
Little, little bit spotty. Do you wanna, do you want, uh, Mr. Weiss to go through the explanation again, Tim?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm good, I think I caught the, the pieces that, uh, that, uh, I, I caught it.
Well, if I have a second part to that, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
We have a decibel meter, and I, I agree with Tim that, you know, these things should be calibrated, et cetera. If, if Tim or Ray, uh, wanted to come out there, what we, what I would suggest we do, let's touch this, this thing off. Let's have Eli go ahead and start sawing logs as hard as he can, let's go down the eight hundred, uh, uh, feet to that nearest home. Uh, we can stand there with a meter, but the best measurement, of course, is just our naked ears. Uh, and we will, I, I think, uh, I'm certain, we will witness that, that sound dissipation or attenuation, uh, because of the terrain, et cetera, uh, will, uh, you know, just make common sense to us. And, uh, we're happy to do that, uh, uh, the forty, the four hundred foot, uh, measurement that we did take, as I say, is down to what EPA calls living room level of sound. We're not four hundred feet, we're eight hundred feet, uh, I, 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 I offer this up because I don't think we've got any real risk here, but we're happy to do it to be able to squash any concerns.
But I just wanted to reiterate that the inside diesel engine, that, that room, you're saying it needs to be left open, just because that, that, that engine is in that room, and it may vent outside somewhat, but there's a, probably a good chance there's some leakage or whatever going on, and it needs that, that end of the building needs to be open for ventilation purposes.
I'm here with just my video off, guys, if you can hear me, I'm gonna try to call into the meeting, I don't know what's going on on my end.
That does sound a lot clearer on my side, Mr. Chairman, from Tim.
Yes. Jim must be a doodler.
Yeah, I see that, he just got a quiet in the art collection going. And now he's muted.
I was trying to grab a couple bites of pizza here, so I do apologize, I did learn a new Zoom trick though, they tell me if you mute and then you push down on your spacebar, you can unmute, so, I learned that little trick the other night, so.
Um, Tim is gonna, uh, dial in on his phone, um, he should be in the meeting here in just a, a second.
Okay.
And we're taking a little break here, congratulations, Nathan, I'm sorry to hear that you're leaving, that's, that's, it's a big disappointment, I've enjoyed working and being side by side.
I've enjoyed the same.
And, uh, Tim's not here, but congratulations to Tim, there are also, there's gonna be two new board members, um, and I, and I cannot tell you the names, we did, uh, one is from Clare, the other gentleman is from the southern part of the county, master electrician, that's what stood out for me is, um, a friend of mine is a master electrician, so I think that'll add a little bit, little bit of variety, and I think that, again, the other person is from Clare, George Green, um, stated good things about the person, or at least mentioned his name, and, and of course was my pick, I didn't get a chance to nominate her because someone beat me to it, darn it. But, uh, yeah, I think, I think it's, uh, gonna be a good board, you guys should be full for next, next, uh, planning commit, next year.
So I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm hearing everything now, I don't know what's going on, are you hearing me better?
Yes.
Yeah, it sounds good.
All right, I don't know what happened, I tried to dial in, it didn't dial in, but then all of a sudden my video came back on and everything's working, so.
Okay. So, if I just, yeah, so, just, just to clarify, that end of that building needs to be open for ventilation, because there is a second, a second diesel engine that's running in there, that may or may not be vented to the outside directly, is that fair?
It, it is vented to the outside, Mr. Chairman. My concern is that if you got a moving machine coming back and forth, that, that could develop a leak, or who knows what's gonna happen with that, and just to exercise an abundance of caution, it seems that having that open, uh, uh, makes some sense, there's also some, uh, small livestock, um, that are in that same building, that livestock, two horses and a pig.
Okay, are there any other questions for, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Hirschberger, or, or staff?
I just, N- Nyer here, I just wanted to make the comment on that and have any discussion, but I hate to set a decibel level and not have, you know, science behind it or practice, some type of, uh, place to put it at where it would be, you know, we got some reference to what's considered acceptable and acceptable, we don't have any type of information to go back on that to, you know, try and set a minimal decibels crossing the property line if we don't have guidance or regulation on that.
Done that in the past was on the windmills, we set a decibel level, I believe, at forty-five at a property line of a non-participating homeowner.
Can everybody hear me? I'm dialed into the meeting now because I fell back out.
Yep.
Yep.
I can hear you.
Got you, Tim.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. So, if, if there's, I guess, if there isn't any other questions right now, or we've been doing some discussion, but I think we're probably at a point where we can, can, uh, make a motion in a second, and then continue with the discussion.
This is Silker, I would move that, um, that Mr. Hirschberger's application for, um, a zone, uh, site plan be approved with the following limitations, that there be no open burning of scrap or waste material, that the size and locations of the log deck, log pile, slab wood and finished product areas shown shall not be increased without approval. There shall not be more than six incoming or outgoing truckloads per month, the diesel engine room shown on the site plan shall be completely, be a completely enclosed building with soundproofing. The applicant shall provide a copy of the driveway permit or approval of the existing driveway, and the hours of operation should be seven AM to seven PM.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Well, Vogel, I would second that.
Okay. Okay, so, for discussion, for sure the noise has been, is, what was that all about?
I believe that was just, uh, feedback coming through Tim's video and his phone, uh, he was connected there via video as well as phone.
Okay, okay. So we were discussing. Okay, um, so it's, have, have some discussion on decibels, and I, I did happen to think when, when Ann was reading down through these, when a building is soundproofed, what, what does that mean? I mean, it's an enclosed building with soundproofing, what does, what does soundproofing consist of?
So Kelly, my thoughts on soundproofing in the past, what you guys have done is ask them to do some sorts of soundproofing. So to try to deaden that sound on the inside. I don't know if they've sprayed foam in, in the past or what they've done to do so. But soundproofing doesn't mean, you know, we're not talking about eliminating the sound coming from. It was more of a, of a situation of trying to deaden the sound some so it doesn't have the opportunity for travel as, as, as far.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have constructed that shed with one inch wood boards. We're open if staff has any other suggestions for, say, styrofoam or some other insulating material.
Okay.
Is there any type of curtains you could hang from the ceiling? You know, down a few feet that would get the echo to not emulate from the building? I mean, that's my only thoughts on that.
I don't know that the ceiling height of the, what I would refer to as a rafter allowed to do that in any meaningful way. It's not that, it's not a very high pitched roof.
So, so just so the planning commission understands, wh- wh- when I, you know, I was, I was reviewing this and looking at staff report before it was sent out to you. And that's where, you know, I came up with, you know, the south end, the south end of the building being wide open. It was with no intention that staff was looking to, you know, enclose that, you know, completely. But just to place, you know, like, like Phil, I think Phil was headed down the same avenue we were thinking is, you know, two foot of something hanging down from the ceiling there at that, that final truss. Some baffles on the ends, eight feet. I mean, if you, if you're 40 foot wide and you take 16 off of it, like I said, you've still got a 24 by eight or 10 foot opening in there. You know, I, I mean, if we're worried about combustion and, and, and issues of fumes and such on the inside, that's going to be something for the building inspector to shake out, not necessarily a, a planning related issue. We're looking at, you know, minimizing the impact of the noise because that's one of the functions in the ordinance that tells us we, we need to, you know, try to minimize noise on, on projects like these. So we're, we're in no way trying to, you know, enclose that end.
With, with what few sawmills I've been around, it's just been a couple in Amish sawmills, there's a few, a couple up here north of here that, I think you're talking about that area where the logs get dropped on some kind of a carriage drape or, or roll area and the log slides down and there's, and there's a saw at the end that, that grabs the log and, and saws it into boards or does, does whatever it does. I can see where that might be kind of hard to, to keep closed. I mean, 40 foot sounds like a lot, but a 40 foot building's not all that wide. And I can see if you're handling, carrying logs in there, I can see where it was maybe an advan- advantage to have it open. Not only in the summer, it gets really hot and stuffy, and in the winter, you just need ventilation also. So I, I, without, I don't have a good handle on how loud that mill is, but I don't even know. Feels like we're getting into something that there's really no good. I wonder if we're just overthinking it. I don't think these mill, we've, we've got the big engine. The big power source is in an enclosed building and, and soundproof. I'm not sure there's that much volume of sound coming off of what's left that we really can, can close it down. My two cents worth.
Mr. Chairman, Eli tells me that the opening is 30 feet. There, there's a constructed in place wall on, on the west side of it of, of 10 feet. Anyway, we're talking about a 30 foot opening.
Well, that would definitely help.
That definitely, yeah, that absolutely definitely helped. I was under the impression that the whole 40 foot was wide open on that one. If we've got 10 foot and that's all I was looking for is something to, something to allow that noise on the inside to return and bounce back a little bit and stay within to dissipate versus just screaming right out of that like a, like a bullhorn. So, so I think that wall there does, does help in, in, in resolve some of the issues that I was concerned with.
I'm sorry, Tim, I didn't pick up on that. Yeah, there's definitely a wall there. Ray was out and met with Eli and me last week and Ray may recall that, that screen wall.
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be my mistake. I, I was, I, I did not recall that, that 10 foot wall. And so that's my mistake on, on the impression that it was a 40 foot opening.
So, so that, that, you know, that addresses that issue that I, that I had. And I'm glad we were able to at least talk through it and, and come to some sort of a resolution. And I think if that 10 foot wall is in there on the west side, that, that, that resolves our issue.
So there's five different items listed under the 1106 standards for site plan review. Are there any questions from? Pardon me?
There are six conditions because we had to add the hours of operation.
Well, I was talking about the, under, under the standard for site plan review, there were five.
Yeah, there's five criteria there that, that we deal with. Yep. And I believe, I believe, Mr., I believe the applicant had went over this, dealing with the traffic and, and such and what we are in previous discussions for, to that.
So there's no, I think, is everybody confident we have any questions about either of these have been addressed or any questions have been brought up? Okay. All right. Ray, could we have a vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Horton?
Yes.
Commissioner Nayar?
Yes.
Commissioner Silker?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
And that's a six zero, long as he carries.
All right. Moving along to agenda, agenda item 10, public comment. Is there any public out there, Ray?
There's no public on the call at this time.
Okay. Close the meeting, the public comment portion of the meeting. Staff comments?
Uh, staff would just, first of all, I'd like to apologize. It's the first time that I have, I had this issue at home and it's the first one of these meetings of the planning commission that I have done from home. Never had issues like this before. So I apologize for, for the, for the lack of service here tonight. But, and then the last thing, I would just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and safe and be, stay safe and healthy.
Ray, anything to add?
Uh, nothing else to add, just to reiterate, Commissioner Horton's wish of, Mr. Rogers, thank you for your, your service to the planning commission and, and we wish you well.
Thank you. I, I really enjoyed getting to know everybody and forming new relationships and learning more about the county. And it really was just, after my wife had that heart attack six weeks ago, caused us all just to refocus and figure out what to do in life and focus on family and let other things go to the side. So it was a scary event.
Okay. Commissioner Silker, any comments?
No, not tonight. Happy holidays to everyone.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Vogel?
Um, nothing, just Merry Christmas to everyone. Be safe.
All right. Commissioner Nayar?
Merry Christmas. Pleasure working with you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Horton?
Again, I'd like to thank Nathan, Nathan Rogers again for service on the committee. And congratulations on another, I believe it's a three year term, also Mr. O'Neal. In all likelihood, this will probably be my last planning commission meeting. So I'm going to like to thank the board for all their good wishes and help over the last eight years. I've been on the planning commission since day one as a county commissioner. I've enjoyed it. My district is District Four, which is Union Township in Chippewa, north of 20, which is not controlled by the planning commission zoning. And I think that's a good thing to have a board commissioner on the, on the planning commission board that doesn't have a representative, that doesn't have a representative district that's under planning commission control. So in all likelihood, like I said, this may be my last planning commission meeting. So we'll see what the new year holds and I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. Rogers? Any comments? All right. Well, like again, I'd like to add Merry Christmas to everybody. Nathan's.
All the time and memories.
All right. Good. Thank you. Just like I say, everybody Merry Christmas and Nathan's been, been good having you on the board. Your neighbor, I damn near ran over you one morning before you started on the board, so I apologize for that. So be careful when you walk by next time. And see everybody next year.
No problem.
Okay. And with that, I guess I need a, I need a, I need a motion to adjourn in a second, but I don't need a vote, correct?
No, no, the chairman can just adjourn, call the motion, the meeting adjourned.
Okay. Well, I moved that the meeting is adjourned and see everybody next year.
See you.
Thanks to everybody. Sorry for the trouble tonight.
Thank you, everyone.